I'll do a call to order and we'll go through the roll call. There would be one second. Okay, Mary?
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Shachenko, Andover.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Stoffey, Marlboro.
Carrie?
Carrie Fralino, Marlboro.
Hey, Carrie, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mike?
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Thanks. Joe?
Joe Claddy, Hebron.
Gabe?
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Great. Kirsten?
Kirsten Erlinson, Andover.
Heather?
Heather Summer, Hebron.
All right, am I missing anybody?
Pam.
I'm sorry, Pam.
Pam Berry.
Oh, Pam, I'm sorry. My list isn't up to date on that one. Pam, she's not going to be here tonight, she told me. And Mike Morris from Hebron. Okay, stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. All right, item three, public comment. So bear with me for a second. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public segment, a public comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and I'll ask Gabe if you could be my timekeeper tonight. And citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this point, I'll open it up to anyone that's physically present for a public comment. Make yourself known. Hearing none, I'll open it up to anyone online. Either raise your digital hand or just let us know that you'd like to participate. Eric, anybody? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to item four. Addition and deletion of agenda items. So I have one that I need to propose, but I'll just open it up to the board if there's any others. Okay, so one of the things that our diligence superintendent and his staff had come up with and identified is that there is actually, and I'm actually embarrassed that I didn't identify this. In our procedures, policy there is, there is a requirement to actually formally adopt the agenda, is that right?
So we have to formally, once the budget has been approved by the voters of the three towns, there's a requirement of the Board of Education to then formally adopt the budget. And so we just need to make sure that we go through that exercise this evening. So we need to add that to the agenda item.
And so just one, one point. And also, this policy did, I think, come up on the radar based on the feedback that we got from Goodman and Shipman or?
It's going to be something that we discuss whether or not it's required policy, but right now it is.
It is a policy.
We want to make sure that we adhere to the policies, correct.
Okay, so.
It came up because Eva brought it to my attention, so.
Okay.
Dr. Shirusi helped.
It was a team effort. All right, awesome. So that being the case, I'll, I'll try to get the motion on the floor, and then if there's any discussion, we'll go ahead and have that discussion. So I would, at this point, I would accept or entertain a motion to add to the agenda item 13.3 under new business, the adoption of the 2023-2024 Regional School District Eight budget. Thank you, Carrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gabe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that motion carries, and so we will add that to the new business. All right. So move on to number five, student representative reports. So why don't you go ahead first, David?
All right, so starting off, everyone has finished their AP exams. So that's a huge stress drop of everyone. I'm pretty sure that most of the AP students are dwindling in motivation. And juniors are starting to apply for, or beginning their applications for colleges. So that means getting or asking for recommendations from teachers and writing their college essays. So that is beginning.
Very good.
Awesome. So first, I just want to touch on some of the, obviously, this is a big event for the seniors, a big week. So I just want to touch on some of the events that are occurring. So on Friday, there's a senior outing to Six Flags, so that's going to be fun. And then on Saturday, on Saturday night from six to 10, I believe, prom will be happening. It's at the Waters Edge Resort in Westbrook. I've, I've heard it's a very nice place, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it. So those are some big events that are happening for the seniors this week, and we're all excited for that. And the second thing is, since I'm probably not going to be at the meeting next month, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, the board here, for obviously letting me do this. This has been an honor, being able to learn more about the education system and to serve with all of you. So, and I definitely, it's going to be a moment that I definitely remember forever. It's going to be a big part of my life going forward. So yeah, thank you all for letting me do this.
Thank you for coming and participating, and not just participating, just to be clear. Rowan has been actively involved, and when we needed information, Rowan was very helpful in digging in to bring actual detailed information to keep us connected with kind of what the student perspective was. So thank you very much, Rowan.
And I'll just simply say, if I could, you know, I, there's a, as many people on the board know, there's a teacher shortage right now. I've already started the recruiting process for maybe four or five years from now. Rowan's going to school next year to major in secondary English education, and we've had some conversations about his desire to come back to Ram, and I told him it'd be great to bring him back.
All right, that'd be awesome. It'll land right at the time that we're starting to ramp up.
Exactly, exactly.
You couldn't time that any better, Rowan. Perfect, all right. So that brings us to item six, the chair report. So first thing I'll start off with was a pleasant surprise, was we had Lily Shapchenko stop by today. She beat you here for some reason. You left before her, and she got here before you did. No judgment on anybody's driving. But she was a former student representative to the board, exceptional student representative to the board. And one of the things that I think, again, as we talk about, you know, budgets and activities here on the board and what, what we do as a board, her feedback after her first year of college was that she thought she was extremely well-prepared. I think the quote was, "It was so easy." And, you know, not to brag, but I feel sort of connected. So she did, had a 4.0 this year, which is incredible and exactly what we hope all of our students that go out after their senior year, go to their first year of college and come back. And so it was really great to see her, glad she came back to the board just to give us that feedback. Great to have the student representatives continuing to close that loop. But really good news and good on Lily. Great to have her back. We had Teachers' Appreciation Week last week. I know there was a staff appreciation, I did, there was a staff appreciation week. I think what is really important is just, you know, all of what we've done, I'm talking about the budget in a minute, but in general, this has been a challenging year. I mean, it's been a challenging year for lots of reasons. I mean, we're slowly but surely finally back into kind of a normal swing. We got back into midterms and finals and regular schedules. And, you know, we had some challenges, some social challenges at the beginning of the year and discipline challenges, all the challenges that go along with it. And it, it would be remiss on any of us to just not stop and appreciate the staff in general, everybody that works here, whether it's Ram High School or middle school, for everything they do. On behalf of Mike Morris and my two sons who are, present their own challenges to you guys, completely appreciate everything you do, and thank you all so much. I was reminded by my, one of my favorite people that work here, one of the staff, Ray, to let everybody know that as part of the respect effort, continuing to, you know, improve the environment here at the school and with the community, that there is a flag football event on June 9th. It's Friday at 3:00 PM, right after school. It's open to the community as well as the school. Love to have any, you know, combination of parents and community members and students and whoever can actually go and do flag football without hurting themselves. We would love to have them. It's five people on a team and one sub, so you can kind of rotate people in. And so, like I said, that's open to the community, and I hope as many folks and staff and students and whoever can participate will do so. So kind of the last thing I want to talk about is the budget. So first of all, kudos to everybody in general. We did pass the budget as a, as an entire Ram community. I think there was different challenges in different towns related to their own budgets as well as related to their own elementary school budgets. And I think sometimes that that information sometimes can bleed over into what happens as far as the communication effort for the Ram budget. But I think, given that we passed the budget, that the effort to communicate, you know, the fact that we had really kind of dug in and sharpened pencils and come across where I think was as responsible a budget as humanly possible with maintaining the services and expectation for student education that we expect, that we got it across the finish line. And there's the thing that would be terrible about this. Yeah, I've had people call me in question about, you know, comparing our budget to other towns, comparing our budget within our own Ram community to the, to the elementary schools. And honestly, it's, that's a wasted effort. They're apples and oranges. It's just not the same circumstances for any of those, whether it's towns that are outside the Ram community or within the Ram community. They're just different circumstances, different challenges, different student populations, different everything. So comparing them would be frankly a waste of time, in my, in my opinion. But I don't think it would be a waste of time is to make sure that we thank all the people that are involved in making that happen because from a board chair's perspective, I can say that it's, it was easy, you know, and not hard at all. But that's because everybody around here made it easy. And so, you know, as we talk about who, who that is, first of all, I think we need to specifically talk about all the department coordinators. I mean, they generally start the process with, with developing kind of a baseline and getting together with the, with the administration, the administrative team who engages with those department chairs to try and, you know, kind of refine that and hone it. The, the fact of the leadership certainly weighs in, and you have to thank them for that as well. There's some individuals that I think, who by name probably need to be mentioned. Mike Schleyhoffer, certainly, you know, kind of from the facilities management perspective, and certainly helping as far as putting the capital budget together. Scott Bootson, I'm going to, Michelle, and I'm going to say Frank Hoare, is that, did I say that right? Michelle Linane, Brandy Chapman, Christine Vardini, and Jen Choma. All by name, extremely involved in making sure that when we actually get to the point where we're looking at kind of the first cut of the document, to be honest with you, we made changes, and I'll talk about some refinements in a moment, but, but that was incredibly good first run. And I think the last thing that I would say is that when it comes to, as far as individuals concerned, I think Eva is the one that really kind of weighs in to make sure that keeps us honest. And there's times where she has to tell not only the, I'm sure the administration, but also the board, things that maybe aren't, we don't want to hear, but she does that. And that's why, that's, you know, frankly, we're very, very lucky to have her here. And we wouldn't have had the product that we had without all your work this year, Eva. The only, the other thing I'd like to just comment is that as much as we appreciate everything that comes from the school, I'd like to just mention that the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee worked exceptionally hard to create an opportunity to take us from, where do we start at, 4. something?
4.7.
I'm sorry, what was it?
I thought that was 4.79.
4.79. I'm going to go, to go from 4.79 to where we ended up at 2.85. That happened because not only did we continue to refine things from the, from, from the administrative perspective, but there was also a lot of work in identifying things that we could pull forward based on being in a really great net favorable position, making some really great advanced purchases that took money that we had available now that's come from the towns and responsibly put it towards things that were going to be projected for the budget going forward, that took money out of the requirement to ask for the towns going forward. And that's something that Eric has certainly, you know, made sure that we, that we think about. We've had a gentleman, what's the gentleman's name that comes all the time?
Mr. Mc.
Mr. McManus reminds us all the time that, you know, just thinking in terms of, we're, we're trying to be respectful of our, our taxpayers, that all those efforts between both of those two committees and all the work that they did to move us from that 4. something to 2.78 is, is incredible. And again, it just re, renews, I think, the town, all the towns' faith that we're doing everything we can to be responsible with their money. And then I, the only, the last thing I'll say on the budget piece is that having our new superintendent, he's not, I don't know if we can call him new anymore. I think you get, what, until June 30th, and then you don't get new anymore. But having our new superintendent here to take all that great work that the administration and the staff and everybody did and the input from the finance committees and, and our individuals in the administrative group and coordinate it and be able to put that together and communicate it. I don't think everybody completely understands, not, I think people on the board do, but maybe not everybody outside of the board, understands the level of communication that our superintendent goes through in making sure that each of the towns gets an opportunity to hear the finance committees as well as the selectmen, get an opportunity to hear the details of the budget. And those are a lot of long nights. Those are a lot of extra presentations. That's a lot of, a lot of extra work. And really appreciate everything the team did and really appreciate your stewardship, making sure that we get to that product. So again, great job with everybody, and thank you all very much for all that work. All right. That so ended the chair report, which moves us on to item seven, report of the superintendent.
Well, I'll just start by echoing your sentiments about the work that was done around the budget. And I appreciate your words about my stewardship, but I will go back to everything that you said, which was, it was a collective effort. And it was, our success was, the success was a result of a team effort to get us to where we were and where we are right now, which I think is a great place. I will tell you that when I got those phone calls on that night of the referendum, I shouted out loud, and my kids and my wife were like, "What's going on?" And I had to explain to them, and bulk of my kids made fun of me for, for being so excited about it. But anyways, it was, it was certainly an exciting thing. I also want to make sure that I echo your sentiments about Teachers/Staff Appreciation Week. You know, I, I see the work that goes on in our buildings each and every day. See the hard work and energy and effort that our teachers and staff put into making sure that our students have the success that they have and making sure that the high-quality programming that takes place at Ram, it's, it's a result of their collective efforts. In the evenings, when I go home, I see the work that happens, that teachers and educators do outside of, of the workday because anybody who thinks that a teacher's workday starts, you know, at 7:25 in the morning and ends at 2:15 when our kids leave, they are completely misguided. It's, it's not the case. You know, Ethan Spinelli, the, the union president, and I have conversations about this on a regular basis where we have to tell our wives, "You need to stop and detach for a little bit," you know? It is, it is a, it is a, you're, you're constantly thinking about, you know, your kids and your students and what you could do to make sure that they have the best experience in school. And I just can't thank our teachers and our staff for the work that they do for, for our students, for, who are, who thankfully are here today. So yes, thank you for everything that we did. We'd had a couple of events. So at the school level, they had a phenomenal luncheon at the middle school, I think it was Wednesday. National Honor Society did a great breakfast for the staff of the high school on Friday. We had a great day where we had the Kona ice truck come and be available for teachers and staff one day and kind of served themselves up from some, some ice, frozen ice, and then we had smoothies one day. So it was, it was a lot of, a lot of stuff that, again, it, it doesn't do enough to say thank you for the work that they do, but we, we did try, so hopefully, hopefully it was well-received. Just going over a few other things. We had, on May 14th, we had two student athletes from Ram. Grace Whitmore and Max Nylan were recognized at the C I A C Scholar-Athlete Banquet held at Aquaturf. The Scholar-Athlete Program annually recognizes two high school seniors from each member's high school with strong academic and athletic careers, high personal standards, and serve as a model to others. Two other Ram students, Sonia Romesh and Mackenzie Donnelly, were recognized by the, with the Bo Dowdery, Mike Savage Exemplary Unified Teammate Award. This award is given to an athlete and a peer partner in each C I A C school for their outstanding dedication and teamwork on a unified sports team. So congratulations to those recipients, and one of them is here right now, tonight, to get another award. So thanks for being here, Mackenzie. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the middle school concert. Dr. Shirusi was there with me. It was a great show. I love the, the, the music program in this district is phenomenal. As somebody who went to, and I've said this before, went to numerous band and chorus concerts, watching my daughter participate in band from the time she was able to as an elementary student until she graduated high school, it's phenomenal to see these student performers do their thing on stage. And we have really, really talented musicians in this district, so it was a great show. We also, just in, in recognition of things, the next time board members go into the gymnasium, you might want to take note. There is a new, I think they're still called banners even though they're made out of plastic, but there's a new banner on the wall that is recognizing the achievements of our girls' hockey co-op participants. They, they have been the conference champions two years in a row, and we realized that we did not get a banner to commemorate their success at the end of last season. So we righted that wrong when they won the conference championship again this year, and we now have a, a, a banner recognizing their success. So take note of that the next time that you go in there. I'll just also mention to the board, over the past couple of weeks, we've had members of East Con staff, Diane Dugas and Eric Petoulis, have been in the district to facilitate focus groups of teachers and staff to solicit data for the strategic planning process. There's going to be some parent focus groups this week on Thursday night, and then again, next week during the day for parents who aren't able to come at night. And information has been sent out, and will continue to be sent out about that as well. So we're excited about getting that feedback on the strategic planning process. The, the last order of business that I'll mention is just that typically, the May board meeting is when the food service contract is annually renewed and approved by the Board of Education. I'm just simply informing the board that unfortunately, it is not on this evening's agenda, and the reason for that is because the renewal paperwork, if I'm getting this right, is, is being held up at the state. All of the paperwork that we eventually have to utilize to renew the contract has to be first reviewed and approved by the state, then it's reviewed and approved by the Board of Education, and the wheels of bureaucracy are turning a little slow, and we just haven't gotten that yet. But we have until June 30th to get that done, or July 1st, I think it just has to be renewed by. So well, it'll be on the agenda for next month's meeting. The last thing I'll simply say, and I'll say this, Rowan mentioned some upcoming senior activities, which is a super exciting time for our seniors. And, and I know we have some students in the audience this evening who are going to be presenting. The thing that I'll, I'm going to put on my father hat for a moment and just simply say, you guys have had good high school careers. You've got a month left, literally a month left between now and when you graduate. And I just would recommend and encourage everybody to, I say this to my daughter every time she leaves my house, just make smart decisions. Just make smart decisions. Because you don't want one bad mistake in this last month of school to leave a bad taste in your mouth. And, and, and sometimes the celebrations of a high school career coming to an end can, can lead to some, some bad decisions. And I just think it's always good for us to, not trying to rain on the parade, but, but it's just, it's important for us to think about. And again, I got to put my dad ahead of the road. And that concludes my report.
Okay. All right, so again, some of the fun stuff that we get to do, I really appreciate you adding these type of things to the agenda, Colin, is item number eight, which is a recognition of the Cabe Student Leadership Award recipients. So I'll turn this over to you and Carrie.
Yep, so I am excited to do this. As you, as you said, you know, it's, it's great. We have an audience, which is fantastic. And, and we're super excited to do events like this. So the Cabe Student Leadership Award, so Cabe, of course, as the board knows, but I'll say it for the audience, is the Connecticut Association of the Boards of Education. And our board member Carrie Fralino is the Cabe liaison for the Ram Board of Ed. And every year, the Cabe Student Leadership Awards Program is designed to honor Connecticut high school and middle school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. And two students from each school in a Cabe member district are eligible to receive the Cabe Student Leadership Award. Criteria for the, for the award is leadership skills and should include a willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and an ability to honor a commitment. And we had, again, two middle school and two high school students who are identified to receive the award this year. We've invited all four here. I know that one of the high schoolers was unable to come, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shirusi to introduce and talk a little bit about our middle school recipients, if you could.
Come on up, we want to see you.
Yes, absolutely. Come on up, Sophia.
That's all right. So I want to introduce you to Sophia McLeod and Amelia England. They are awardees this year. Sophia is a seventh grade student on the red team. The team describes Sophia as a role model and a leader on the team. She's compassionate and insightful. She strives for excellence in her subjects and is conscientious with assignments. In her own word, she prefers to listen more than she speaks to make sure she's being thoughtful. Outside of school, Sophia likes playing basketball and cooking, though she has several siblings. And she hopes to continue playing basketball, has her future plan is to become a doctor so that she can help you. I can tell you that the award is given, we give the Cabe Award to two seventh graders, and only two. So out of 180 some odd students, these two shine. Next, Sophia and Amelia. Amelia England is a seventh grade student on the inquiry team. The team describes Amelia as an outstanding member of the Inquiry Academy. She has shown a positive attitude towards her schoolwork and is open and kind towards her fellow classmates. Ingenious hour, she has shown an ability to follow her passion and work through adversity, even if it means not being allowed to shoot off rockets in the school fields. Yes, I said that. In her free time, she enjoys flying rockets for the TARP Team America Rocketry Challenge, which I developed, and shooting arrows in the Jode, Junior Olympic Archery Development. When she can, she participates in some after-school activities such as the Gender Sexuality Alliance and Math Club. She's a good student and a good person. Yeah. Can we do it out here, Carrie, so we can take pictures of? One chance, come right up. Absolutely don't want to do. I appreciate you. You guys standing, so I'm going to hold up your thing for me, please? Get used to this. You guys are doing a great job. You're going to have a lot. Awesome, congratulations.
Yeah. So I'm going to step up to the podium for the high school recipients. I'm going to ask Mackenzie if she'll come on up and stand with me, making sure. Like I said, it's exactly what. So Mackenzie is one of our award winners. I'm going to talk about both of them. I'm going to start with, with Mike Markey, who is the other award winner. Unfortunately, Mike wasn't feeling particularly well and, and was not able to be here this evening. But Mike is our, the, the first recipient for this evening, and want to talk with him a little bit. Mike is a member of the National Honor Society and DECA throughout his senior year. He has managed the school store during the first period, which is very, very big deal because as a senior, had he not been managing the school store, he actually could have slept in and missed first period. So he gave up sleeping in, which is pretty amazing, if you ask me. Mike placed first in the state DECA competition for the virtual business accounting competition. He is a leader on, he's a leader of two of the athletics teams that he is on, serving as a captain for both the football and the wrestling team. Last fall, he helped lead the football team to the playoffs for the first time in school history. And during his senior wrestling season, he won the Class M championship at 195 pound and clinched Ram's spot as the Class M champions. Now, we do know how that ended with a referee giving away a penalty point. It did not take away Mike Markey's accomplishment, so I just want to congratulate Mike, even though he was not able to be here. Mackenzie is able to be here with us this evening, and she is our second recipient of the Leadership Award. Mackenzie has achieved at high levels of both academic and athletic success in her time at Ram High School. She is an outstanding student, earned high grades in all her classes. She is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as the National Business Honor Society, and an officer in DECA. For her college essay, she wrote about being a female in business. And Mackenzie also submitted letters to the New York Times about the pay gap between men, men and women working. New York Times about the pay gap between men and women working in the business, in the field of business. She has juggled her high academic demands while also serving as a four-year member of the girls soccer team, and working approximately 20 hours per week for the past few years. And as we talked about earlier, also did a great job as a unified peer. So she is a well-deserved recipient. Thank you all so much for being here for that.
I'll share those pictures with the administrators and anybody that wants to get them, parents, whatever, you can certainly reach out to them, and they'll help them for you. All right. Let's do more of that. Okay. Brings us to.
Student program spotlight.
It's not the same one here, but I'll go to that. Okay, student program spotlight.
No, consent agenda. My apologies. It is consent agenda first.
So approval of minutes first. I apologize, Spain Trip, you're gonna have to wait a minute. Which is 9.1, which is the approval of the minutes. Do you have the motions? Because I don't. Great, thank you. Okay. So one of the things that we, again, trying to dig in and make sure we do things just a little better every time, and understanding, refining a few things. One of the things that kind of identified is that in the past, we've accepted, I think, minutes or consent agendas en masse, and actually, what we need to be doing is accepting them, especially when you have multiple minutes individually. So with that being the case, we had three meetings in the past that need to be, have our minutes adopted. And so for 9.1, the first is, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 17th Board of Education meeting. Thank you, Sue. Is there a second?
A second. Mike?
Thank you, Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes unanimously. The next one up, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 1st Board of Education meeting, the annual meeting. Thank you, Gabe. Is there a second? Thank you, Carrie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed. That motion carries unanimously. And finally, the last one, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the May 1st Special Board of Education meeting. Eric? Sue will second it. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion also carries unanimously.
Just a quick point. I wasn't present on May 1st. I'm going to abstain from both votes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. You're going to abstain from both May 1st votes. Got it. Item 10, the consent agenda. So 10.1, we have resignation letters from Kara Manfredi and Amy Gagny. Both letters, I believe, are enclosed.
Yes, they are.
With the agenda group.
Yes, they are.
Okay. At this point, I would entertain an emotion to approve the consent agenda. Eric, thank you. Is there a second? Joe, thank you for the second. Any discussion?
I just simply want to say that I wish the teachers that are, all the best of luck with everything that they're doing moving forward.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Look at the policy on this, because, I mean, it just feels weird to me that we are approving resignations.
It's on, it's on the list of the policy. One of many, but yes.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. That also carried unanimously. Which brings us to item 11, and the student program spotlight, Spain Field Trip.
So at this time, I'm pleased to invite Ms. Lori Vega-Boulay to the front. I don't know if Brendan's coming with you as well, but he was a chaperone, he might as well be there. So Ms. Vega-Boulay is a Spanish teacher here at the high school, and also the World Language Department Coordinator. As board members know, she was recently identified to serve as the interim assistant principal at the high school, as we have someone who's out for the remainder of the year, and she's jumped right into the administrative life, and she's still standing on her feet, which is. But she, so as the board knows, the board approved this, a trip for the students to travel to Spain last month, and she is joining us tonight, along with some of those students, to tell us about their trip. So thanks so much for being here.
Right. So we have some students and a couple of parents here to speak to about the exchange program. Just quickly, just to give you a little recap, we invite our sister school, which is a school from part of the west of Spain, Luisa Gómez, which is that IED school, from where they come from, to Spain. They come over, they spend about two weeks with us, and we take them on various field trips. It's a cultural exchange. And then, we usually go visit them often in April, sometimes in February, depending on when Holy Week lands. And so we went this year, April 7th to April 19th. And on the slideshow, I'm going to let the students kind of tell you a little bit about each of the occasions. Story, but there are some pictures to kind of remind you what we did. We have six of the 15 students that travel with us. Nina Wang, Michael Hamburger, Drew, we have Tom Baker, Emily Tabalary, and then Marina McLaughlin, and we have two parents also, if you'd like to ask them any questions.
Great.
It's exciting. Yeah, the share. So I don't know, you want the next slide? Oh, and I'm sorry, Mary Grubeda was my co-advisor, and then Brendan Burgess was my additional chaperone. We usually take a third chaperone, often, often from social studies, so. All right.
Yeah, so like the first day, we obviously fly into Madrid. We stay there for a few nights. We visited like the royal palace. You can see a bunch of like big side chair. It's really cool, because like just the whole experience, like people in New York, all like lights, and sort of lots of things going around, and obviously, so sad. Experience, we went to lunch, all the way there. So, yeah.
So we can kind of go through this maybe a little quicker, so we won't be.
This is the good stuff.
So do you remember, so we'll just go to the next slide. Do you remember? Oh, Toledo. Remember Toledo?
Somebody, step up, somebody else. Step up and tell us about it.
Basically, like there's no driving into Toledo, it's walking everywhere. They don't even, right, they don't even allow cars.
There's some, yeah.
Yeah. We grabbed some lunch there. It's the first time I had pig, so it was cool. Yeah. What was the shop?
Which is in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was weird.
Like not weird.
No, it was really good. I love it. It's my favorite city. It was really cool walking, like over like the Roman grid. Best, like when she sold, and she was part of it, too. It's really interesting.
Good to see like the Roman aqueduct, you can see in the bottom left. It's also, it's pretty.
Yeah, it was all interesting. Walk around, it was like, it kind of felt like fake, like a movie set or something, but it's just kind of the way it is. It definitely felt like different from the US, something that you kind of have to be there to experience.
Oh, now we get to Cordoba. Top right, the center of Cordoba. That was pretty cool, and there's a ton of shops you could walk around and go in. And one of the coolest experiences when you're in Spain is that like, when you're going to get like ice cream, you have to order it in Spanish, which is kind of intimidating, because everybody likes ice cream, so there's a long line of people. And like, if you don't, they don't understand what you're saying, then people get mad at you. Yes, for like, sort of amount of change, if you didn't understand it, you just slap a big bill on there, you know, they split it up. The cathedral and the school, right? That was, yeah, that was the bottom line. That was, that was really nice. And they played music for us there. Super cool. You can see like the little pictures of, right, the part of those patios, it's like a festival kind of, that's really famous, play the black music across Spain, too. But like a bunch of houses, especially in the center near the cathedral, or Mesquita, they like, basically decorate their whole houses outside. It's gorgeous. So I know it's not going to be that weekend with our family, we just like explore the cities, or saw what the. Get that, you just go travel Spain. Stay with family, you're not staying with someone that lives there. So I think that's why this is really an experience.
We can see kind of that picture with all of us and our exchange siblings from Spain. We got to spend a lot of time, it's like a big trip, with both the American and Spanish students. I felt that was to really be ready to experience the culture, because they tip us around a lot of activities that we might not experience here in the US, whether it be just like an activity year, a certain.
Yeah, it was really awesome. I think like spending time, like you didn't only get to talk to your exchange students, like all of that, develop friendships. I think like I still talk to my students like a lot of them, again, and I think that's just a really awesome experience that will like contribute to my life and future, my study in Spain. College, which is really awesome.
Their school that, just to jump in a little bit, the school that they visited, it's from 1560s. So it's a very old school, very different than this modern one. And so they have a chapel in the school, because it was at one point an old village, it was also a hospital. And anyway, there's a long history with the school. And so that was kind of a different experience for them. And it was a very different structure, so. And then the Mesquita, which is what you refer to Marina, is the second largest mosque in the world. So they have it right in Cordoba. And Cordoba is a UNESCO site, so the whole city is just ruins, and obviously, historical context for them. So it's kind of pretty awesome. It's really a unique experience for them, so.
Yeah, it's like crazy, like the things that like they, I mean, by like, it's like, get excited about like taking the public transportation, but like here, we just don't experience that. Like, I know. Dinner, we just walked by and we got like, it's like Spanish on that, but it's like, it's like food they eat there a lot. And it's just right outside the Mesquita, which is really unique. Like, we're just like eating dinner casually outside, like in the west side, it's just something we've never experienced here. Students go swimming here. Tiny beach, it was nice.
Yeah.
Eric.
So we studied some of those works. Another thing that I experienced classes, it was really cool to get to see some of those.
Yeah, building on that, I know like, you have a painting of Spanish port, and about like art. And so seeing, we weren't able to see pictures, but the product exam in Madrid, so we saw a lot of Lascai's, which is a lot, and obviously, also too here. And then, what was really cool to me about my office, it's like this whole city, and then you just kind of like hit a point, and it's like beach, and you can see all of the mountains. Like, one thing like here, there, or there, I didn't feel like submerged or anything. It was a lot of city, and then nothing. See that here, tell, like there's a city, beach, and like the mountains, it's just really cool.
I know, there's, you're gonna have to participate at some point here.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide.
Um, I love it. That was really interesting. Oh, we got to visit a thorough.
Yep.
And that was so cool. They had like that garden, we got to see outside. And then we also got to walk back inside. It was like huge. And all the art inside was like so big, like the walls, and the ceiling, it's like, it was just like all over. And then also, I don't know if you could really tell, oh, maybe in like the, you try the top, like right behind the, you could see the walls. Pretty sure that's.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that was really cool to see. And you could see like some of the mountains were like snowing. Supposedly, it's fake snow, but I don't know. I like to fully be able to.
Well, you know what's cool about something like seeing the Sierra Nevadas is when they start realizing that Nevada is named after the Sierra Nevadas, you know? And because Nevada has, you know, in the backdrop, there's mountains, and Rockies are in the way distance. But there's this idea that they look like the Sierra Nevada. So now you know why Nevada's Nevada. And so, anyway, I think those are the cool kind of connections they can make while they're here.
At the top right, it's. And I think it was recently restored, last year or something.
Yeah.
And that's just like, it's a fountain, supported by six lines, lion statues, and I thought, I took, like almost.
All right, next one, the next slide. Okay, next slide. All right, so yeah.
We were only there for a little bit. Top right is where we all just got to walk around and. This plaza?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, and it all, the sides are almost like booths, it's like little like tired, like just sections for each like main city in Spain. It's really, well, we don't have any pictures of it, but if you want, it's gorgeous. They're all really intricate. And then, we don't have a picture of this either, but we climbed.
La Herada.
La Herada. But this big tower, it was really cool.
Yeah.
It was, it was really cool, though, with this, all instead of being steps, it was like ramps, so that they could bring their horses up there, and like, that was how they traveled. So that was really. Ridiculous. So the entire city, it was just so breathtaking.
Do you remember what that tower, what's the trajectory, why the horses went up? Like, why would, do they remember? There's a lot of immigration coming at them. So remember, in Spain, everything has against reconquest, or it says it's been conquered, a lot of the mosques become structured as cathedrals. So in Mesquita, in La Mesquita, which is in Cordoba, that mosque actually has a cathedral in the middle, because they stopped the destruction of the mosque, but it was so beautiful. In Sevilla, the mosque that used to be there is no longer there, but the Minaret, which is the tower they used to call for prayer, is still there, and they made it into a bell tower. So the ramp that goes up is how they would ride up quickly so they could call for prayer. That one, so that's.
There was like so many bells.
Yeah, then the bells went off. So it's really impressive, because then you see it all.
Thing that's really different, sort of just touching, but like, the different like religions, like the Catholic, Jewish influences from, we talked about the history, just from throughout the ages, it's also different. You can really see the mix of like the Arab and that like Gothic Catholic architecture.
Anyone else who's about to remember about, what else do we see, and if you don't remember, I don't know how, well, how we feel about that.
Saw like a crown, like a bunch of, what are they called?
Oh, the relics.
Relics, yes.
Yeah, and they were just the detail, and like everything's just. Yeah, the, I don't know if everyone, I know it's relics, but relics, basically, whenever there's a saint, and they become martyred, if they become a saint, they often have, save a piece of their body, usually bone. And so they got to see like, pieces of bone that were from a long time ago. So that was like very fascinating for them, I think, right? Not that. All right. I think, is there another one? I'm trying to think where I am. Is that the end? Okay, yes. So we did a lot of other things.
Got to proceed by going dancing, because that was an interesting part of the culture. It was very talented, also, very beautiful.
Yeah.
And also, and obviously, we got to see.
Yep.
We were there, and that was really cool. At least some of us were considering trying to, or studying broad, which is cool to see, like what's. Definitely a lot different than you'd expect any university.
And if you study, if you do study abroad in Spain, and you study abroad, spill that And if you study, if you do study abroad in Spain and you study abroad in Spain, that would be the university you go to. So that was kind of cool to see that.
I'd love to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions. Go ahead.
First off, I appreciate your pain on the suckling pig. First time I experienced it, I was outside the country and the the language was not sort of a barrier. It was a barrier. I was just, this thing came at me and I was like, hmm, what do I do with this? So. No, no.
When I when I went with my Spaniard's family, they would take us and they would um. It'd be really late at night, so you had no energy. And then they'd be like, okay, now here's ten different types of foods. Try them. And one time there was like this table and like a table came out and it's like big knife came out and just like this big slab of meat was just slapped on this table. And they cut it up and they're like, you wanna try it? Not even tell me what it is. And then it's seen on there like you just ate Bambi.
Yeah. So I did have a question about um the families and how that that worked. I mean, it had to be a little strange to be going into a family that you don't know. And then I can't remember which was first, but do you stay with the same family of the person who stayed with you? Just a little bit more about that experience.
Um, I think we definitely. Easier to stay. They come and stay with us until we're. So they came to stay with us and we do stay with the same person. So my girl Carolina, she came and stayed with my family for about two weeks. Um, and then I I'm still see in touch with her and I talked to her about it a little bit, just texts. Um, we have FaceTime for a couple of times and she was in um America. So I kind of already knew a little bit about the family, um which was definitely like. Little bit like leaving going over there. Um, and I mean, I had a wonderful experience. They were just wonderful people. They like appreciated my efforts. Because obviously our Spanish is not as good as our students' Spanish. They've just all been learning it since they were little. Um, but they were just amazing. They practiced. All of us like got so much food for lunch every day and like.
Yeah.
They all like tried to do everything they could just in their culture. It was amazing. And I think also staying with family, it really forced us, at least for me. Yeah, um compared to speaking English. So it really forced me to be like, I have to speak Spanish. And that was really good for me, I think. Just, I mean, obviously like learning a language, um you can learn in class, but just being forced to just speak it. Because you have to is was the best experience for me.
Anybody else?
If um living in their houses like where it's like. Do you get to see kind of not only like the language, but also like how they live, like every day it's so much different, like they they go to work in the morning and then they. And then sometimes they go back to work at night and they won't get to like ten or eleven o'clock from work. And it's just like so horrible. And they don't like, also another thing was like, if they have a car, which a lot of families did not, but if they did, it was just like usually one car. Even if like both the parents had work like in different cities. For me, I'm pretty sure um my host staff wrote in Marga and then my small work to Sibyl. So it was pretty far. It was like three hours and two hours from where they live, but they were just. And I don't know, so going back with that twice.
So I don't know. It's for a lot of my father and I also had a house there. Like it was really different. The first thing my Spaniard said when she came over was like, you're sitting in a car with seven flies. She go, there's so much grass here. And like, it's like the stuff we don't even notice, but like I was I was on like the third floor apartment. Down and it was just like parking garage, like city and it's just so different. It was really cool. And obviously I experienced it or whatever. But that was just so different from here that I think it was really good that we stayed in.
Any any questions from the board members online? So I'm sorry, go ahead Eric, please.
I'll just mention, excuse me. My cousin Gail uh is a Spanish teacher. And she did an exchange for an entire school year, actually an entire twelve months. Where she went to Spain and lived at the home of a teacher there and taught in that school. And that teacher came to Florida and lived in her house and taught in Gail's school. And so uh my wife and I, my girlfriend at the time, we went over and and visited uh in Spain. We had a blast. It was in uh Alacante, which is which is on uh off the Mediterranean. And we noticed the same thing that 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 their schedules are so different. We they'd be walking babies at ten thirty at night and and finishing dinner at midnight. And in the uh in in the apartment. Of this teacher where we were staying, um was like a tall building, but very skinny. So it was only um one apartment thick and and they didn't have AC. So what you do, it was by design, and they would open the windows on each side. And then you'd open all the doors inside the apartment so that some breeze could blow through the apartment and and keep you from baking at night. So it was a very, very cool experience and uh and we had a lot of fun and and it's nice. It's it sounds like you had a lot of fun, which is which is great.
So one of the things that, uh, you know, we would love to have you come here and, you know, there's always a thousand different competing interests. You know, what what, why should we keep doing this? Why should we keep doing the the Spain trip?
It's it's really unlike any other trip you'll get. Like I, it'd be, I'm a member of the band, we all went to Disney for a week. And that's fun with with your friends, but like in a lot of other trips, you could like. But it's the cut, like the culture in Spain is just so different. It just gives you such a unique like experience of like how other people and the other half of the world. Like the other side of the world. It's it's just, it was it was a great experience. I know. Again, I'm definitely gonna try to go back and experience for.
It is like an experience probably can't get any other way. Like as an adult, you can travel these different countries. Um, but it would be very difficult uh to get that experience of what it's like living with someone who lives there and like doing what they do. So it it like gives students an opportunity to understand the culture from like a very personal point of view. And um it's something like you can learn, we learn in class, like, oh, what are their daily lives? Like, what is, you know, what do they do for fun? But until you go there and live it, it's not really, it's not really real.
Yeah. Um, I think the cultural awareness like helps you develop a new perspective. Um, I I notice that, you know, obviously the. Um, in Spanish culture, their values are very different. Like they're very easygoing. Um, a big thing was that all the cities were way cleaner than they are here and like more people were walking, there were less cars and all cars were hybrid and eco-friendly. Um, and they obviously like they love spending time with their families. I don't know about you guys, but my Spanish uh sister spent a lot more time with her parents than I would spend with my parents. As I think it's important to gain an understanding of different.
Yeah. I think that it was just like overall such an emerging and and lightning experience because it's something that like Michael said, you'd never be able to experience. If you're just like going as towards like even if you were orange. Like see these things and experience their day to day life. And you're really just like thrown in there and you have to like use your skills of the language. And it also helps like the things that you learn there. You like with other things so far since I've come back, I've been able to use um like some of the things that I've experienced and learned on like my exams, I've been able to use it. And then also just like in class, it gives like an additional, like something that you can add to conversations that you like. No other students would really be able to have something like that to add, which is overall helps you actively, which really helps you like.
Yeah, I know like a bunch of people touched on how you're never gonna get this kind of experience, but I think it's also nice about it's like exchanges do exist. Still staying with the digital family, I don't need it easier. I know I was a little nervous about being sick, but it was nice. I still had a group of people, obviously chaperones. Um, like friends from here who I still saw, I still interacted with and sort of like provided that like sense of warmth, sense like, okay, I can speak English and I don't have to be so like thinking all the time. But I still do get that true cultural immersion experience that you might not get if you like go to college or something like that. Um, and then also you ever touched on like the language piece, I think for me like before, like I went, I knew I liked Spanish. Thought it kind of on the same pod, just going there experiencing it like actually speaking and being like, oh, I can like, I know more than I like think I do. It was kind of like, yeah, I know this is something that I want to use like in my future. I wanna go into law and like work with like. Different language or like business, international business. I think for me, it just really like opened my eyes to like how amazing it is to just learn Spanish, to learn a different language, to experience another culture and really change.
So there's only like so much of like the culture you can get watching a YouTube video about the culture at like eight twenty in the morning.
That was a little sarcastic.
Like it like this class, we we learn a lot, but like this, it really, it like throws you in the fire. You have to, you have to go out there, you got to, you have to, you have to use what you have.
I'd like really would like to outside, like if you can. Anyone who's asked me about it, like I told them, it's amazing. Please do it, please do it. So.
So I wanna I wanna relieve relieve all of your anxiety that I was actually somewhat of a loaded question. I wanted to give the the rest of the board an opportunity if they don't have any experience with this trip. To hear from you guys personally, what it what it was all about and how how important it was. But I gotta be honest with you, uh, my daughter, who's twenty five now, uh, participated in that trip. And I think she went twice, if I remember right. I wanna say. She went a long time ago, yes, but she went twice, I think. And um she uh we we also hosted um uh Spaniard and uh the we are Spaniard. And um they are still friends today. Um, they've 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 visited a couple of times as adults. And uh so it's a very, if if I think if, you know, if it works out well for you and your your exchange uh uh family and friend. That uh it's one of those things that lasts forever. And I I I think the thing that I would just say about you guys is that it takes a lot of courage at your age. To step out of your comfort zone, travel to a completely different country, live with a family that you don't really know in a culture that you've only studied. And really, you probably would all admit, don't don't know until you actually get there and experience it. That's that's very um, that that's that's big. That's that's takes a lot of courage to do that. And uh I think the thing that bodes well for all of you is that now that you've kind of, you know, you cut your teeth on your first international travel, I bet it will be hard to keep you in the United States. It's hard to keep my daughter in the United States. So every time I turn around, she's trying to go someplace else. Um, but I but it's great. I mean, it's a great experience. One thing I would beg of you guys to do is that you took all this time and all this energy and there was obviously some money involved to go and gain this experience. And now you have uh four classes worth of students here at the high school. And even if you exchange it, you know, if you you have siblings that are at the middle school or whatever. Please share your experience and, you know, in in part, you know, how you how great it was and and the culture, things that you picked up. And, you know, you've all talked about nuances that are different about there than are here and some are better. And, you know, don't be, don't be bashful about sharing. And that's how things get better by by experiencing new things and by sharing and by um helping, you know, educate your your fellow students too. Because they won't all have that experience and they won't all get that same, oh, yeah, moment when, you know, that you guys all got by being immersed with this this family. So. Yeah, absolutely.
I I just wanna bring this from a teacher perspective because I I've said this to them and I and I don't know why. Uh, but anyway, I say this and I say this every year and I truly mean it. For me, being able to take students on this trip is like one of these amazing experiences for me, even though I've been there a million times, like Cordoba might as well be my second home in so many ways. But to be able to experience something with students who may have never traveled, may have never had an experience like this, even if they have. The family bond that we kind of get and the relationship we kind of build and the kind of low key, more authentic kind of human to human interaction is completely invaluable. I cherish this so much just because I get to just see them in a different way. And I'm just lucky that their parents allow me to be one of the people that takes it, takes them there. And gives them that kind of vision of seeing something new and that they, I get to see it, you know what I mean? I get to experience it.
Yeah.
Really the best part for me. So I love them. All of them are becoming so closer and you know.
May I ask one question?
Yeah, please go ahead here.
So um I'm a huge history buff, so I'm curious if going there and looking at the architecture, because our architecture is a true tell of what different times were. And you were discussing the mosques being turned into chapels. Um, does it make you want to. Examine past history, uh if going back to medieval times or or even going to different countries there in Europe?
Yeah, I think definitely. I know. Sure, and that we talked a lot about architecture and culture there and just like seeing it there, not that it was like. You don't understand how that gets sent, how like seriously like on what people saw like. Are like the fact that it was all built in. It's just amazing. It definitely makes me like, I'd love to go see like Rome and.
Beautiful.
Sort of like that. I always was interested in it, but it's really like it makes me realize how just that just.
Thank you.
Like you said about history, it was just when you just did like every like roots like story, let me create something. It's like wow, we learned that like last year.
Like, because Vega did show us paintings that we were gonna see in the museums, but you just never really, you're like, oh, like, that's cool, whatever. But then you see the painting person and it's just like, it's just such a new experience, the paintings, you know, so much of math in them, which you expected it to be. It's really cool to see that and to walk through the cities and to see how old the buildings are and the different architect compared to ours. And there are a couple of spots in Madrid where they they tried to modernize it, to 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 modernize it, to look like certain spots like New York City. And they just stopped like they had a, because it just didn't look right.
Right.
You had a McDonald's that they, that was like, but it kind of.
Gothic McDonald's? Or some man's McDonald's, is that what you said? Oh, fancy. I'm sorry, fancy McDonald's. Okay. That right? All right. Well, uh, if we could, I would love to get a picture with everybody. Could I ask the board to step around for one second and grab those folks and come on our? Yes, you have to take a picture. Yes, yes, you guys. And I'd like the board members coffee. I'll be like to this point, yes, I'll be standing towards the front of the. Thank you guys. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for coming and sharing this with. Really appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, just now just jealous. When do they have the board member? An opportunity. I missed that. Okay, thank you. Yes, yes. No, you have to sit through the whole meeting. Thank you guys so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Okay. See you later. Thank you. All right. Uh, so that brings us to item twelve, which is old business and a discussion of the an update of the well drilling.
Yeah, so I I will, I'll start by apologizing. I I I should have included this update in my weekend review and realized this morning that I didn't do that. And um so I did send an email earlier today, probably around one thirtyish to to the entire board, letting them know that unfortunately, the drilling attempt for the second well site. Happened last Thursday and unfortunately it did not um uh yield the results. Uh, obviously, we're we're optimistic that it would yield. Um, so just the facts are, uh, they came Thursday, they came Wednesday, set everything up. Came back Thursday morning, drilled, went to a depth of a thousand feet and um the yield of gallons per minute uh ended up at that thousand feet was um. Three point five gallons per minute, unfortunately. And just for con for context, the well that we had been using for many, many years. And just for con, for context, the well that we had been using for many, many years, the yield for that, uh, was, was, I think thirty six gallons originally. And so that really the, the company that has kind of advised us with regards to kind of what we need as far as a yield in total, um, to adequately irrigate our athletic fields is, is they're saying forty, we could probably get away with less, but they're saying forty would be a good number. And the idea would was, you know, between a combination of our existing well, which still actually after it had been hydrofract, went back up from, I think about a one gallon per minute to sixteen gallons per minute. Nineteen, thank you. Sorry. Um, went, went back to nineteen gallons per minute. We were really hoping to, between a combination of the wells, to get up to where we had been around, you know, the thirty, thirty six to forty, and we just, we just aren't there. Um, there are some, um, options that we have, that we can do moving forward. We've, the timing of, of this meeting and our facility subcommittee, um, just didn't work out perfectly because we actually have a facility subcommittee meeting on Wednesday evening. Um, we've arranged for the gentleman from Eastern, um, Water Solutions, the company that we've been working with, to attend that facility subcommittee and discuss those options with the board members. And I would encourage any board member that's available, um, we'll, we'll get that link to share it with everybody to, to, to kind of hear those details. But they're going to have some recommendations for us with regards to, we're anticipating probably hydro fracking, the well that they just drilled. I, I could give the, the board, again, I'm not a technical person about with this, but I can kind of give you an overview. Basically, what they're looking for when they do a drilling is they're called, they're looking for fractures. And a fracture is a place where, um, the, the, the bedrock has a crack in it, right? Because those cracks are the sources of the water. And then, and, and what they're hoping to do is, is hit a lot of fractures. Because the more fractures you hit as you're drilling, the higher the yield of the well is likely to be. They hit one fracture at a thousand feet, one. And, um, I think it was at four hundred and fifty feet, they hit the fracture at four hundred and fifty feet. They were optimistic that they would hit more as they continued to drill. And the reason that ultimately they recommended stopping at a thousand feet was because they didn't hit another fracture. Had they hit more along the way down, they, they said, we, we would have recommended going deeper than a thousand feet, but it just didn't seem to make sense. So I can certainly try my best to answer questions if board members have them. And, and, and Eva and I can try to answer those questions. Um, but, but again, the, the gentleman from Eastern, uh, uh, well company or Eastern Water Solutions is going to be in attendance at our meeting, uh, our virtual facility subcommittee meeting on Wednesday evening. And I think what we'll have to do is hear what they have to say. Um, I, I, I do have some, we did have a, a brief meeting with the gentleman this morning in anticipation of that meeting. Just so I, I'm a type of person, I like to hear things a couple of times. And so I, I could do my best to answer some questions if, if the board has them. But I really think the best thing for us to do is hear directly from the company about what their recommendations are so that the facilities, facility subcommittee can, can talk about some, some guidance as far as what we can do moving forward. I, I, I will also say, although I'm, I'm still hoping that obviously we, we won't need to travel down this road, about a month ago, I'd say, we met with Rich Clerco, Clerco, thank you. Eva, Michael Schleyhofer and I had a meeting with Rich, who is our field, um, kind of advisor. And we did talk about some, um, some things that we could potentially put into place if we found ourselves into the situation. Um, you know, there are special treatments that can be done that hold on to moisture in the air and whatnot. But we are going to have to make a decision about what we're going to do moving forward with regards to getting a, 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 a more consistent water source. Because as the board knows, um, one of the things that we also have kind of going on in the background is, uh, they're drawing up a, a lot of information because we're getting ready to go out to bid for the, for the work that we have identified as, as far as field, uh, work, uh, the, you know, pretty comprehensive, uh, field work. So we, we need to make sure that we have an adequate water source to irrigate the fields. That's something that the advisor, uh, the contractor from Tom or, or when advisors has said to us all along is you need to make sure they have a water source. So again, I could do my best to answer questions if the board has them.
I, I think it's important to talk just for a moment about the permitting process and where that may place us from a timing perspective, right? We were granted a, a primary location with, and a secondary location under the current permit.
Correct.
For the facility. Is that something that, uh, Eastern is, is looking at speaking more about?
So the Department of Public Health, is my understanding, um, governs the permits for wells and they were the one who selected the sites for it. So, um, I'm not sure if they were going to cross that bridge, um, to try looking for another spot or not based on what our conversation was this morning.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, uh, the, the one thing that I'll, the gentleman that we met with this morning, um, and he's the, uh, the same person that came, that attended our meeting over the phone that we had several months ago. It doesn't ease the pain, but I will just tell you, he, he has said over and over again, I had no anticipation of being in this. And I don't think that's because of his lack of savviness. I think that it's, he said, everybody that I work with, everybody on my crew is shocked that we did a second site, we went to a thousand feet and, and we didn't get a better yield than we ever. He, he, he just said, this has just not been his experience in the twenty five years. You know, he said, he's definitely drilled wells before that have come up dry, but I don't believe that deep. But on two different well locations on one site.
Right.
I mean, I, I mean, I think we, we have to wait till the facility subcommittee has an opportunity to kind of attack this. But is there any other questions that anybody has at this point?
Save mine for Eastern.
Yeah.
And hear what the options are. We'll make sure we document it well and get that out. If anyone who's unable to attend the minutes, we'll represent our findings. And of course, we'll review it again together.
Any of the board members online, any questions? No? Okay. All right. Well, not the news that we wanted to hear, but I think the, the next right first step is for us to get the patient through the facility submitting and then get their, their advice to the board. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, which brings us to item thirteen, which is business, which is a question, oh wait a minute, uh, yeah, thirteen, three.
Yeah, yeah, we're at the end.
Uh, new business thirteen point one, which is discussion of Board of Gate, Board of Education meeting location.
So it's a little bit easier than trying to dig a well. So this, this topic came up, I'd say a, a couple of months ago with regards to having conversations with Eric, who, who manages our technology for these meetings. As the board is aware, um, this has been a space, I believe, that has historically, since the building, since this facility was built, this has been the Board of Education meeting site. And it's served the purpose well, served us well. However, we are now at a time where there are requirements for us to have virtual meetings. And this location is not ideally suited for having virtual meetings because of the fact that we are using essentially technology, the camera and equipment. We essentially stole it, I believe, from Dr. Serusi's, uh, conference room. And, uh, that, that was really meant for facilitating parent meetings with teachers. And in the, in the wake of the pandemic, when we really needed to make sure that we had a virtual option of a, 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 a joint virtual and live option, um, I think we kind of commandeered the equipment and, and, and just made this space work for what it is. And, and it's, it's, we've gotten it, gotten along, as I understand it, for the past couple of years. But we're really looking to, to have more of a permanent solution. I'll use air quotes when I use the term permanent, but I, you know, a more permanent solution for the board meeting space that's, that's more conducive for, um, the technology use, that is more conducive for, um, not having, it's important to talk about not having to disrupt, um, aspects of the music room, i.e. a forty five thousand dollar, uh, grand piano that we just invested in, that I'm being told, um, by members of our music department, it, it is, it, it compromises the integrity of the piano when it's being moved with any level of frequency. Basically, what they said is you really want to move it as minimally as possible.
So the piano is kicking us out, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty close to me.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Pretty close for you too. So, so, you know, we, um, so we, we spent some time looking at different options. We looked at the high school library, but because of a whole host of reasons, that the number of stacks, they have pillars that are kind of in the space, just the general layout. It, it just made more sense to use the, uh, middle school library as the identified site. We went down, we spent a great deal of time kind of looking at the site, uh, looking at the layout. We might have to make some changes, some minor changes. We've obviously consulted with Eric with regards to this as, as, you know, he oversees the spaces as the library media specialist. And, and really landed at that being the, the, the ideal site, um, for, for meeting locations. And in order for us to get the, the, the area set up, the way that we would have it be that more permanent solution, um, we, we'd need to make an investment. Approximately twenty six thousand four hundred dollars, I believe, is the, is the approximate cost. Eva could get into the specifics when we get there. But what we're looking at, uh, investing in is some technology, uh, you know, uh, monitors that would be permanently mounted into some positions and put on swivels that could be maneuvered so that people in the audience, um, are not trying to look at the same screen as people who are on the board side, right? That it's just not conducive the way we have it now. And we, we just think we need to get a couple of monitors and we need to get some technology. We would make an investment in, uh, some, some tables that would be utilized, uh, that are not, um, six by, you know, two or six by three folding tables. They would be primarily purchased for the purpose of, of board meeting space, but certainly utilized when other events and opportunities present themselves, like awards ceremonies, parent events, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, we're excited about this because we think that it will be more conducive, um, to having the board meetings moving forward. It also has, um, an exterior entrance so that we don't have to worry about people standing outside. I know what happens to some board members sometimes, people are standing outside waiting to get let into the, to the, to the building and we don't have somebody banning the door. So, uh, again, I'm excited about this, um, but, but again, it, it would take an, an investment. We did meet last week, I believe it was, with the finance subcommittee and discussed the financial implications of this. And, and the finance, members of the finance subcommittee, I think I'm speaking accurately, were unanimously in favor of, of this. Eric had some great questions about, uh, which you could speak to, but, you know, about making sure that it was, um, going to be able to be, this investment would not just be for the Board of Education, it would also be beneficial to students. And that's something that I didn't mention, but that absolutely would be the case. We'd be able to use a space for, uh, presentations, um, uh, you know, larger groups, bigger than a class could go in and use the space. We could use it for virtual field trips, which is something that, um, you know, although I think I'd really want to go to Spain based off what they're saying, but sometimes virtual field trips are an opportunity for, for students to, to gain a perspective that they currently don't have. And, and so it is an investment, obviously, for the board, but it's also an investment for, for the entire, uh, middle school population and, and the district. So, um, I can certainly take any questions or members of the finance committee, uh, that, that were there and heard about it as well. And, and Eric is from that perspective.
Anything from the finance group?
And my understanding is there'd be more seating there than we have here. And, uh, the, uh, meeting that we have in the auditorium now could just be regular meeting room. So we're not moving things around quite so much.
Okay. Any other input?
You said this was the middle school library?
Correct.
Okay. So it really just enhanced the usability of that, that space.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't repurpose it permanently in any way. Okay.
Nope. Nope. Still would be utilized by students on a daily basis as it is now. It's just that, you know, we would move some furniture around for the meeting. It's something that they do for, um, you know, I know they do it in a lot of the school districts where they utilize a library space for that.
Eric, any input? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're, it's your space.
Um, I think looking at the, that tech in the proposal would be a lot more conducive for what we use it for, just because with this, the screen can only be seen like by half the room. And we have, like, even the large audience today, um, like it's hard to see everything. And I think with that new setup, it will be a lot better, like sound wise, video wise. And then there's a lot of little things too that I do within there. So like that camera records in the back, the new one will have the capability just to live stream it out immediately. So there's no worrying about like that memory card being corrupted or something at the end and running out of space on it like a few months ago. So just things like that, I think will make it a lot easier and more professional and kind of, and just I think the usability is in that space in general, because this year alone, we've already had dozens of classes come down, to use that library space. And I think as we evolve that space into something more, um, twenty first century like that, we'll just add to it. And there will be a lot more inviting for like the, um, the staff to use it with our students.
So I would just say that if I, if I'm sorry, go like.
Oh, I was just going to ask a question about the timetable. When would you anticipate our first meeting down there would be, uh, if we were to approve this?
So we would. If, if we were to approve the tran, transfer, we would make the purchases, the purchases of the material and equipment. We would get that in immediately. I, I would hope that we'd be able to transition and have our first meeting of August down there.
Thank you.
Some, some electrical work would need to be done. They'd have to run some cables, run some drops.
Basically be like a over the summer kind of thing.
Um, so in theory, everything will be done by June thirtieth, but our first meeting is in August.
I, I'm just curious about the, what the investment is in. What's the equipment? What is it?
Sure. Um, Eric, jump in if I'm, if I'm wrong with any of this, but essentially we're looking at two, um, monitors, uh, television monitors that would be, um, mounted, and, and be able to be viewed again on a swivel. We're looking at cameras, um, that also were going to be mounted as well, um, so that we don't have to have the, the setups that, like we have now. We're looking at, um, the sound pucks would be utilized, um, or, uh, what's that? Yes. Yeah, exactly. So, so, uh, everybody could hear fine. We'd be looking at, um, some network switches, again, electric and data drops that would need to be put in. We would have, um, the table investment, we're going to, these chairs are perfectly great. And so we're going to continue to, to use these chairs, but we would get, um, uh, tables that have modesty panels and can fold up and could be stored relatively easily.
And it'll be more in a viewer shape, so we can all see each other.
Yeah, yeah. Some amplifiers, getting a, again, more of a permanent setup. Eric would have like a, a desk that he is utilizing, like a station that he's working from. So it's a combination of the technology, it's a, uh, the furniture and then just the, um, the electric work that needs to be done. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
So I think the only thing I would have said, uh, when this first discussion came up, the only thing I thought was if it's purely for the board meeting, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's a good idea. But I think the one thing that, um, I would, I would say is that, um, you know, I think it's probably, I don't know if it was two years ago, it was probably two years ago, somebody had said to me, you know, are we going to go back to the point where we require the board members to be physically present for all the meetings? And I, I gotta be honest with you, in my business experience, that's not the case anymore. And I don't think it ever will be the case anymore. And I don't think it's necessary, to be honest with you. I think there's some, you know, I think I can understand, I, you know, I think I can, I come from the, the age where I can say back in the day, we all would, there was a, a point of being face to face. Not, I appreciate that, but I just don't think that's the way the world works anymore. And if anything, I think we get a better participation, um, a wider participation. And I think, you know, board, board members are just like anybody else. They have, you know, things that come up. And so the opportunity to continue to do hybrid, um, I, I think is never going to go away. And it certainly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of that. The second part of that, that I think is Colin talked about a little bit, but I'll just, you know, throw it out there. And I think the rest of the board members and their different, you know, aspects of their job would probably agree that everything's done this way now. There's hybrid meetings all over the place. And I think we really should be forcing the students to get involved in hybrid meetings and hybrid field grade, uh, field trips and hybrid, you know, collective activities and events, because that's what they're going to experience going forward. And so if they don't have that, if they don't have that comfort level and, you know, presenting and exchanging feedback digitally and that kind of thing, I, that, that's probably a mistake on our part. So, you know, as long as it has the, the ability to kind of augment that. And side, side note is that it's a better circumstance for the board. I, I will say, not that the board, I would, I would necessarily say this is a good idea if it was just for the board, but these meetings are important and it is important for us to be able to see each other, engage. I think it's important for the stuff that we put up on the boards for not only us, but the people that are here present to be able to see it. I honestly struggle a little bit with the way it is right now. Not that I don't appreciate everything that we've done. Thank you, Dr. Serusi, for letting us, uh, you know, pillage and plunder your conference room. But it's probably best that we do move on to something that's a little bit more permanent. So I mean, that's my two cents on it anyway. So do, is there any other comments or concerns? All right. So is there a? Let's see.
So in your enclosure of thirteen point one A is a proposed transfer for twenty six thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars.
Got it. All right. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the appropriation transfer in the amount of twenty six thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars as presented at the Board of Education meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Heather. Is there a second? Eric makes a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll, I'll just mention, we have the money. We're in a good position.
Okay.
And and this is not going to hurt us taking it out of. Tell me if I'm speaking wrong, to to take it out of, you know, this year's budget is a reasonable thing to do and harm our harm our ability to complete our year here.
Okay, great. Point. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll do a actually, I like to do these ones when we're talking about money by name. Thank you very much. There you go. My name this time. She's fine, you men. Yeah, thanks. I forgot her name, I'm sorry. So I'll do a by name vote. So Carrie.
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather? Pam is not here. Mike?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
And I will yes as well. Okay, thank you. So that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. The piano one. Which brings us to 13.2, which is the financials. I will turn over 13.2A to Colin and Eva.
Okay, so 13.2A being included in your packet. You will note that at the end of April, on April 30th, there I am projecting a net favorable position of $659,684. As for our first post COVID fiscal year, the revenue is trending higher than anticipated, which is always a plus. The capital improvement fund, the refrigeration unit replacement is still on track to start on June 16th with the tentative completion date of August 14th. The legal department has reviewed the detention pond plan and the RFP has been posted. And then at the time of this memo, the the drilling was postponed, but as we now know, was not as successful as we wanted it to be. As for the capital non recurring fund, the DOT project, it appears that within 23 days or so, we should be getting a check for somewhere between $11,000 to $17,000, which would be our completion of the DOT project. So I'm still pressing my fingers there. And the legal department is almost in the completion of the RFP document, the review of the RFP documents for the athletic field project, which is the rehabilitation of the north side of 316 and the drainage around the track or perimeter of the competition field. And pupil services still encumbers and makes changes to their students as their IEPs are completed. This portion of my report, are there any questions?
Anyone? Okay.
Okay, so moving on, 13.2B, that is the next appropriation transfer as for board policy. These cover March and April. There's 38 journal entries in your packet of 13.2B. And the total for these transfers is $126.76 because there were so many and the same thing happened last year that I put them on a spreadsheet to track it and make sure that my total comes out correctly. So are there any questions that I might be able to answer?
These audit recommendations for the capital assets, is that based on the the recommendations that came out of that last audit?
Yep.
Do not have any. Does anyone have any questions on this? Okay.
These will require Board of Education.
Right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the appropriate transfers in the amount of 1,000, sorry, $126,847.76 as presented at the board meeting. Joe, thank you. And Eric will second it. Is there any discussion?
To relatively small.
Okay, hearing none. Well, I have a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously, which brings us to 13.2C.
Well, here you will have the April 30th, 2023 income statement for which will reflect a loss. But as of today, we finally got the smart fund, funding for smart fund 2.0 March, and it was $49,000, a little over $49,000. So that helps negate the loss that we're experiencing currently. And there is not much more to say about about this, but we are anticipating more revenue coming in at at the end of May to help off that.
Is that going to carry over? Is it anticipated this is going to carry over into next year or not? It's an idea that they're going to continue to present the free mail thing.
No, so the federal government has not been won over, I guess, is the best way to put it for this concept. I know there's some states that have adopted the universal free for their state. Connecticut seems to have a mixed purview at the state level on what they want to do in that regard.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that?
Only one smart 2.0 payment.
It's so far, that's all that came in so far. So we're still waiting, well, yes, for April, and then we'll have May and June coming in.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right, 13.2D is your student activity for middle school and high school. We balance to the bank, which is always a beautiful thing. Are there any questions on student activity? Okay, so 13.2B is the short term investment fund. For the month of April, we reinvested dividends of $1,372.12. And I've also included the daily rate sheet of interest rates so that you can see how the month trended. We started off higher and ended just ever so slightly lower than the month started. Are there any questions?
You just have to keep watching until the interest rate drops and then.
Switch it back.
Switch it back. Yep. Great. Which is 13, wait, 13.2E, right? Oh, that's soon, okay, right. All right, so that brings us to 13.3, which is what we discussed about adopting the agenda. So again, this is just a policy trip, policy event that we'll revisit the point that it makes it to the top of the policy agenda. But I'll go ahead and get the motion out there. And then if there's any discussion, we could certainly have it. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for new, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, no, that's it. That the regional school district eight Board of Education approved the adoption of the 2023, 2024 operating budget of $30,598,391 and the capital budget of $540,990 as approved by the taxpayers.
Still moved.
Thank you, Sue made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike beat you to it, so Mike is the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that voice, that motion carries unanimously. Which takes us to committee reports. Start off with facilities. Mike?
We're meeting on Wednesday, 6:30. So we look forward to reporting out to the board, to discussions with the well drilling company.
Okay. Finance?
Finance, we have pushed our meeting out to the 17th. And the our previous meeting, we discussed the, you know, the video situation and moving things to, excuse me, moving things to the middle school and and quite some detail. So that's kind of where we are in movements forward.
We pushed the policy out to the 17th. The next finance subcommittee meeting is the first of June, I believe.
First, that's it.
So I just, sorry, thank you. Make sure.
Okay. I don't think we have any negotiations at the moment. Right? Nope. And which brings us to policy. Carrie?
We're meeting on the 17th and we're going to be reviewing dress code policy.
Okay.
What time is that one? Carrie?
Seven, that's eight to nine, I think. Sorry. Facilities is.
Back to back. Okay. Program?
Yes. Yes, we had a meeting on May 4th and Bev Fisher joined us. And she shared some exciting information about a new course proposal for guitar class that would begin, I believe it was the school year of 2024, 25. And we have an existing staff member in the music department who is, you know, qualified to teach that course. And the feeling of the people in attendance was that if we thought it would be a very popular course and that, you know, we supported the creation of the, it's actually going to be, I believe, two courses, correct, Colin, eventually?
Correct, so it's going to be guitar one and guitar two. Semester long courses. Yeah, yeah, so it's a it's a total of two classes that would be implemented for the school year.
Okay.
Right. And one of the things we talked about is it gives students an opportunity to, you know, access a a different type of music instruction outside of like, you know, the classical instruments and choral, you know, groups that are already existing. So it sounds pretty exciting.
I gotta tell you, whenever you go into different towns and different parts of the country, you see when you enter a town, like there'll be a sign that says some sort of proclamation about whatever sport they're the best at or whatever program or whatever the thing is that they're, you know, I feel like on the entrance of Hebron, Andover and Marlboro, there should be a sign that says, welcome to one of the most, the leading musical programs in the country. I mean, seriously, it's great. I mean, I I'm not terrible, I'm not musically talented at all, let's put it that way. But I I've really grown to appreciate and understand significantly what what the program is here, you know?
Well, you know, it is amazing because we have such a talented staff who can deliver so many different things. This is just one of the things that we hired a new staff member for the start of this school year to take over in the music department for Eric. This particular staff member has a real talent and proclivity toward with the guitar. And it's just, it would be foolish to not utilize that talent and and delivering that type of instruction for the kids. So I'm I'm super excited about it. I I was telling Bev, my my daughter is self teaching how to self how to play guitar. But like, I would have loved for her to have the opportunity to do this. I I know in some schools, they'll actually use online programs to teach guitar instruction because they don't have a teacher with Chris's with Chris's capability. So it's it's great for us.
One of the Morris boys has a guitar in the corner of his room that I haven't seen move in a whole lot of time. So maybe maybe this is the moment, who knows? All right, that's great.
I'm wondering if the music department would accept guitars from the public to help out, you know, for the student.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that I could certainly talk to Bev about. I will say the the challenge with that is sometimes you get $125 guitar donated that maybe somebody purchased on Amazon for their, that's been leaning in a.
Well, that looks like the one in the Morris boy.
Correct, you know, and so I I that's one of the reasons it's being put in for not next school year, for the 23, 24 school year, but the year after that is so that we can budget appropriately for it to make sure that we get the proper equipment and supplies. But your your suggestion is certainly worth having with 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 that for sure.
At least spec it out and like, you know, yeah, let's see what what's out there. I I agree. That's a great idea. If if the one in the corner of my room doesn't move, you can have that one. All right, so that brings us to the facilitators. And I'll I'll just speak on Eastcon, really nothing new, other than they continue to try to improve your opportunity and offerings in a very challenging environment for them. They were recovering from some significant challenges and it's all, it's all good. The other thing I would just mention is that, again, every time I turn around, I find out there's a new aspect of Eastcon that's servicing our region. And the was the they're participate, they're helping us drive the train in the strategic, the strategic plan, which again, just they're pretty unique entity. And I I enjoy quite a bit participating with them. Gabe, Carrie?
There's really nothing new. We presented the awards. I do have to follow up and see if maybe they can streamline some of these emails. Because is is it you that mentioned last meeting? There are a lot of me, there are a lot of emails.
They're definitely busy. Yeah.
So, but they also sent an email out that basically has everything.
Yes, everything.
It would be nice to get that email in the beginning of the month versus the end of the month.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think that people will pay attention more if they're just not getting it heard all the time. Right. That's me.
No, I agree.
I agree, wholeheartedly.
That's right.
I'm with you. Yeah.
If only they had a communication. If only they had a communication professional.
There is that little trash can shambles.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard. It's a lot. It's a lot. Yeah. Okay, any other comments for committee reports? Questions? All right. Hearing none, that takes us to item 15, which is public comment. Bear with me one more time. Hebron, Andover and Marlboro Community Engagement and attendance at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this time, I'd open it up. Anybody present? Gentlemen? Please, Ethan?
You're up here. Just a couple meetings, I feel like I need to come in that. First, congratulations on the budget on behalf of the teachers. Sorry, Ethan Spinali, 22 Ruben, Laura. Congratulations on the budget. We know it's a big deal for the Board of Ed and for teachers as well. We see boots on the ground, how the budget can impact programming and services to students, both academically and extracurricular. From the department heads, building administrators, the superintendent and you all aboard, the the business offices, we know what it takes to put together a reasonable budget that the voters can approve. And we got that done again this year. And Ram's been doing it a lot lately. Historically, we've been able to get it passed. So it takes a lot of, a lot of effort.
Recording me, please.
Our friends in Hebron have not been so lucky. We look at East Hampton, Colchester. So we we really do appreciate it, teachers, and and we know a lot of the efforts. Congratulations to everybody. As Colin said, my wife was working late at night on her school computer. And she said, as I was sitting there watching TV, she says, hey, the budget's passed. I immediately picked up my phone and texted Colin, congratulations, because it's really worth celebrating. It is important. So I appreciate that. Something, the second thing I was going to mention was the teacher appreciation week. We appreciate that as well. The ICs, the smoothies, the staff really appreciated all the things that were done. We got some teachers, Niall Tresser was leading the student National Junior, National Honor Society, rather, breakfast. Lawrence Niven was doing the student council. Had some activities going on all week and it was really a good time for teachers. And we appreciate the sentiments and the appreciation that was given out last week to that. And also mentioned, just really quickly, this past weekend, I had a chance to go to a CEA conference at Mohegan Sun, there are 500 people there. And one of the topics, as Colin mentioned, was the teacher shortage and the issues schools are facing at this time of year, hiring new teachers. And so I just wanted to just mention that it's something that affects teachers as well as well. You know, when when districts have trouble hiring, it puts extra stress on the teachers that are obviously here working. We have two resignations again, and, you know, young teachers that just had to make a decision about their career, tough decisions and stuff in the world of education today. But I really would like the board to start having some conversations about what we can do here to to help recruit and retain teachers to this district. There's there's competition out there for a lot of reasons. And I'm hoping the board can, at least in the next couple of years, just start thinking about what we can do here to help keep teachers at Ram and in the district. This is a special place, it's presentations, you know, that that takes effort by by a lot of people. And we know what happens when when there's staffing shortage, it's difficult. And we do see how it affects the students, mostly that's what what troubles the teachers when there's nobody in that classroom and there's 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 subs and there's no one to be there, no one to hire. We do see how it affects student learning and that's what what gives us the most angst in regards to that. So if you could discuss that, I'd appreciate it. Lastly, I would say with a month left to go, teachers are excited. Lot going on this time of year. I have my oldest graduating, my first one as well, so that's exciting for us. But it's also exciting because the college kids are coming back. I get to see them out, I've seen them a bunch. But it's also exciting because the college kids are coming back. I get to see them out. I've seen them bus. Lily did not make it across the park until I stopped her. I got to say hi, but it's something that does keep us going. The last month of school when we're waiting for a much needed break just to see those kids come back and and to tell us how well they were prepared and all the exciting things they got to experience the first year of college. It makes it all worthwhile at this time of years. Thank you for the work you're doing. See you next month.
Thank you, Ethan. Is there anyone online that'd like to present public comment? Nothing? All right. That takes us to informational items. Anything of note, Colin?
No. So, you know, just as as Rowan alluded to, Ethan alluded to lots and lots and lots of end of the year activities that are coming up. Senior, I'm sorry, senior end of seasons. Like senior nights are happening for a lot of our sports, which is super exciting. We've got the senior prom coming up. We have the senior trip coming up to Six Flags. I think it's six, yeah, Six Flags. So just a lot of stuff, a lot. It's I am equally excited as Ethan is about us being down to a month left of school, but I also know that there's a lot of stuff that's going on in between now and the end of the school. And it's just, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a lot to do. Exciting.
Just one thing I'd note, you shared the disciplinary numbers, just the kind of broad categorical numbers beyond being a policy nerd and a little bit of a data nerd. And so I did have an opportunity to kind of take a look at that. And I confess that there's some graphs and there may have been some graphs involved. I think the thing that stuck out with with me at that, and I don't think it's anything we can should or could discuss right now, but one of the things that stuck out in the data is that it seems that it's all second half of the year, January, March, April. Or January, February, March, April is the is the seems to be the time when there's the most trouble. And and it graduates and then it sort of falls off at the end of the year. But yeah, that's that's the timeframe. So it sort of feels like probably a discussion for another time. But what, why is that? And what is it? And what do we, how do we, you know, because I look at every one of those this suspension days and think to myself, that's that's one lost day of of that we, number one, that we're paying for, and number two, that they're not getting. So how do we address that? But anyway, I thought it was interesting to look at the information and to the degree that it's appropriate. However, you know, the administrative team wants to take a look at that. I'd love to hear, you know, some thoughts about how we can maybe make that less of a thing. All right. So that takes us to item 17, which is the executive session. And so I would like to entertain a motion that we go into executive session and invite Colin McNamara for a portion, the beginning portion of that session.
Still moved.
Thank you. Carrie, so second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries and which we will go into executive session.
It'll take Eric a little bit.